I'm Bernie Savalstad, chairman of the President Newport Beach Historical Society. We're interviewing Joy Brenner.
That's right.
Current District Six City Councilperson. And Joy, why don't you kind of start out the beginning of Newport Beach history for you and grew up here?
I wasn't here for the beginning of Newport Beach, but...
No, that's not... Your beginning.
That's right. But we came here in 1961. My dad bought a service station in Newport Beach in Corona Del Mar. He, uh, there was a little gas station down where B Candy is, right across from Albertson's All-American Market. And, um, my dad, we lived in Fullerton, he worked for Mobil Oil. And he said, you know, the guys that own the gas stations are making all the money. So he bought a gas station and said, "We're moving to Corona Del Mar." And I said, "Why?" Because my friends are all in Fullerton and I love Fullerton and it was great. And so I saw no reason for us to move to Corona Del Mar. But, um, we moved and I started my sophomore year in high school at, um, at Newport Harbor. And so it was hard breaking in because all the kids had gone to school together forever. And, and so I'm at Newport Harbor and, um, I had a couple of friends that I met in the neighborhood. And one of them said to me, "They're gonna build a new high school. They're gonna build Corona Del Mar High School. And the, um, principal is gonna meet with some of the kids that are gonna be transferred over there. So do you wanna come?" So I went with a group of about, oh, I think there were about 12 of us that went and met with Leon Meeks, who was the new principal of Corona Del Mar High School. We started meeting at Newport Harbor and we started talking about whether it's gonna be, what are the colors gonna be at the school and who's the, what's the mascot gonna be? And we came up with a whole plan of action. And, and the next year, our junior year, we transferred to, um, Corona Del Mar High School. So we were the seniors, our, our junior year, we were the upperclassmen and they didn't make the seniors transfer. So our junior years, we were the upperclassmen and then our senior year, we were the upperclassmen. So we were there for two years. And when we got to the school, then we presented all these ideas that we had about the mascot and, and all that. And then they voted, the student body voted on what the colors should be and that the Sea King should be our mascot. I don't know who came up with the Sea King. It wasn't my idea, but somebody came up with the Sea King as our mascot. And so, um, it was among my classmates was the person who wrote the, um, the school song that's now up on the, on the gym was my friend Tim Patterson. And he was in the first graduating class. And so it was, it was Janet Ray, Janet Milwaukee Ray are still part of town. And Doug Salisbury, who's still part of town. And then a lot of friends who've moved out of the area. But, um, so we got there and it was out, there was nothing out there. It was just the school in the middle of all these fields out at Miss Bluff. And, uh, you would think under those conditions, they could've come up with a better traffic plan than they did because they had plenty of land. And now my granddaughter goes to City and both my daughters graduated from there. And my granddaughter is there now. And I had to pick her up there at school the other day and it is just total block when you get out of school. It took me 45 minutes to get from the back of the school out in Jamboree. And I kept thinking, wow, why didn't they plan better for this? Because they could have. But anyway, so I started school at Corona Del Mar High School and, and, um, I got involved in student government. So this was a passion early on. I was, uh, senior class secretary. And we, um, you know, we, it was great. I used to say, I still say, that all the, there were a few rich kids at Corona Del Mar High School and most of us were just middle-class kids. And the rich kids had to fit in with the rest of us. So it was, it was just very all-American and, and wonderful and we had a great time. And so, um, we, our first, we played our football games at Davidson Field at Newport Harbor still and as we do today. And, uh, I remember our very first touchdown was in the fog at Davidson Field. Tommy Johnson ran over for the first touchdown and we couldn't see, we couldn't see it. It was total whiteout. And so, you know, we got the word that there was a touchdown, but it was the first touchdown in school history. So anyway, but we just had a great time. The kids, the big thing back then was, uh, Bow Week was still, we could still, you know, go out and cruise the peninsula and the island for Bow Week for, I think, a couple of years. I think they maybe stopped that in 64 or 65. But, but back then, we had a great time. We'd go out and cruise in all the great old 57 Chevys.
Great times, yeah.
Yeah. So we, and the boys were in car clubs back then. So all the boys had these metal plates in the back window of their cars that said they were part of this car club or that car club, whatever. But anyway, it was, it was a very innocent time. It was like all kids did that was bad was a little bit of drinking on the weekends. But, you know, it was really, it was a pretty idyllic time to live in Newport Beach back then.
Oh, uh, I wanted, did you work at the service station there for a while?
I did, I did. I would always go down at night and do my dad's credit card receipt. So I'd have to, to fill in the sheets that listed all the credit card charges by hand that they turned in to get credit for the, the credit cards. And then when I was a senior in high school, my dad decided that I should work with the public, that it was a good experience for all kids to, to be out there working with the public. So he got me a job at the, um, the snack shop, which was the Cocos that was at Narcissus. And PCH was a snack shop back then. And so I got a job and so my senior year, I was working weekends at the snack shop. And it was wonderful back then. They had a bakery that was attached in the back. And you would walk in every morning and just the smell of fresh baked goods was wonderful. But I met some, I had some great friends that worked with me at the snack shop. And then I worked there all through college and, um, and then...
Which college did you go to?
I just, I ended up going to, in fact, most of us went to Orange Coast for our first two years. It was like an extension of high school and very few people went on to a four-year college right then. And, um, and then, you know, kids, I wanted to go back to Fullerton because that's where I had had these wonderful memories. So I went back to Fullerton. And I could've gone to UCI, it was brand new. And, um, but it was kind of out in the dirt out back then. So I went all the way to Fullerton to get away from home. So, um, but I still, I continued to work at snack shop and then later Cocos through college.
And what was your major at, uh, Fullerton?
I majored in sociology, the study of people in society and how people work in groups, which has really, you know, that's kind of been an interest my whole life. And history and political science were all, those were the three areas that I was most interested in.
That's true.
So, yeah.
And then did your dad eventually sell the service station or...
Well, it was really sad. I mean, to show what a different time it was, he bought it in 61. In 69, he had a heart attack and so he took a partner in. So he made the mechanic a partner and they owned the service station together. And when my dad died later in 69, Mobil Oil wouldn't let my mom keep the gas station because she was a woman. And my mom could've run that gas station with her hands tied behind her back. As a matter of fact, after Mobil made her sell the station, she went to work for Tom Sharp that owned the Union Station down at the other end of town. And so I was talking with Hamid the other day and I was in there. I said, "This is the office where my mom used to do the books for Tom Sharp at, uh, the Union Station." So, yeah, so...
I used to own, uh, campus gas at Irvine and I also was with Shell Oil Company, so I know a lot about first things.
You know exactly what he was talking about.
What you're going through.
That's right, the same thing. Yeah. So, yeah, and so, yeah, and so, you know, back then, I, I was mentioned to someone the other day that my dad had the, um, AAA towing service for the area. And so he had, I think he had about three trucks that were out and about all the time. And so when it came time for me to get a car, I wanted a VW Bug. But my dad said, "Nope, I've seen too many of those in accidents." And he bought me the biggest Chevy Impala that you've ever seen. It was like driving a building around. But I wish I had that 64 Impala these days. So, but, uh, my dad, so he had the towing service. And do you remember, this might've been after or before you got here, but there was a hamburger stand attached to, um, Albertson's All-American. It was like a lean-to sort of hamburger stand that was attached to Albertson's All-American. And they made homemade donuts. And so people would go there and have their coffee and donuts in the morning. And then they'd go there and have lunch. And one day, a lady drove her car through the, the, uh, left yards. And so there's a picture in the Daily Pilot of my dad with his tow truck towing her car out of the hamburger stand. So, but, and, and the really good times. My mom and dad, um, they would take me with them when they went to the Hurly Bell, which was the, the Five Crowns was called the Hurly Bell back then. And they had a piano bar there. So my parents would take me with them on Friday nights when they would go to the Hurly Bell. And we would sit around the piano bar and sing all the old songs and just had the best time. There was a lot of music around back then, but there's not as much music these days.
And you went to work at some other positions and jobs?
Oh, yeah. So after, well, so when I got out of college, I got married and I just worked for a little bit in the Tustin Schools. But then I had my girls and I stayed home. I raised the girls, um, until they were in junior high school. And then I went back to work after that. And that's when I went back, I went to work for the Irvine Chamber of Commerce when I first went back to work because I was doing, I had done so much volunteer work over the years. When I was a stay-at-home mom was when I was on the Parks Commission. So when I was a stay-at-home mom, the mothers got upset because the city, somebody had donated 100 trees and the city was gonna put all 100 trees in Grant Halle Park between Marguerite and the CYC. And so, um, the moms got all up in arms and said, "We don't want our kids riding their bikes through a forest to get to school." So we stormed City Hall and we, and we went down there and we, and we met with the traffic engineer and we met with people on the city council and we convinced them to put a reasonable number of trees there and not a, a whole forest. And so from there, I got appointed to the Parks Commission, the Parks Beaches and Recreation Commission. And, um, when I was on the Parks Commission, I got to know, um, our street tree guy at the time was Jack Brooks. And Jack said, "Well, you know what the street tree guys always refer to that park as?" And I said, "No." And he said, "We call it pervert park because all the moms were worried about the perverts hiding behind the trees." So, anyway, so for years, the street tree guys called it pervert park. But we were effective, you know? We, we got down there and we got them to listen to us and, and they paid attention. And so by the time I was ready to go back to work, I had a lot of experience just in, in the community. And so my first job going back to work was I went to work as an event planner for the Irvine Chamber of Commerce. And it was kind of fun because they were a bigger chamber at the time and had a lot going on. So I went to work there and then I realized, um, that I probably wasn't gonna build a career at the Irvine Chamber. So I went to work for UCI. I went to the advancement department at UCI, which was all about, you know, what I worked in was always community involvement and bringing the community out to the university. And I always said, you know, if I can, if I can show people what we do and they're impressed with what we're doing, then they automatically wanna support us. It's not, I don't have to sell the university because we're doing so many exciting things out there. All I needed to do was get people out there. And so I became an advancement, um, director for the university. And I worked, before I retired, I worked in the College of Medicine. So I got, um, I worked directly for the dean and I got a lot of, um, you know, our Newport Beach people who were interested in higher education and supporting that were very involved in, um, at UCI. And so I got to meet a lot of Newport Beach citizens, philanthropists, when I was working at UCI. And I started a program at UCI called the, um, the VIP Program. So anyone who had given, you know, a large sum to the university would have my card. And if they needed medical treatment, they would call me. And I would get referrals from the dean and find out who the best person was for them to talk to. And I would facilitate their appointments with the UCI physicians and, um...
And about what year was that approximately?
That was, um, early 90s, I think. Yeah. And, uh, and my final job working out, well, actually, I was recruited then by HOGE, by the HOGE Foundation to come and start a similar program at HOGE Hospital. So I started the benefactor program at HOGE Hospital. And at the time, I had, I think, 25 couples that were in the benefactor program. And they were all people who had given at least $250,000 to HOGE Hospital. And so I went out and I, and I met with people throughout the, the, um, hospital and, and told them, you know, that if something happened, I might be calling them because, um, we wanted to make sure that our donors had a great experience at the hospital because we wanted them to support the hospital so that we could provide greater service for everybody. So it really was a, a way to provide great service for everyone, but working with the people who could underwrite various programs. So I met just wonderful people there. I got to know Mary and Dick Allen there, who, um, ended up, you know, they underwrote the Diabetes Center at HOGE Hospital. And I met a lot of just really amazing people when I was working at HOGE Hospital, loved that. And then I ended up going back to UCI and working for the Samuielli Center at UCI because Susan Samuielli was very, is, is very interested in integrative medicine. So I ended my career working for the Samuielli Center at UCI. It was great. Just, I just, I, I mean, the stories I can tell you about the donors that I met there are just, like, I could write a book about the donors because they were fabulous. And I say I retired on the third grandchild because at the point that I had three, I said, "You know, I'm spending way too much time at work. I need to be home playing with those kids." So I retired on the third grandchild and there were two more. And so, um, so then I was just a, a stay-at-home grandma for several years and at that...
Now, how many years were you on Parks and Rec?
I was on, I only was there four years because I ended up going back to work before. And I didn't feel like I could give it adequate time, so I ended up going back to work. But, um, so then after I retired was when, um, John Cox and I had been friends all the, when he was mayor and I was on the Parks Commission, we did ribbon cuttings together. And we've got, we've got pictures of, on plaques that the city gave us of us doing these ribbon cuttings. And so then we ended up both being divorced after I retired and so we got together. And, um, and so John and I were traveling a lot and I had the grandkids. So I wouldn't have even thought about running for city council, but then John became ill. And, um, when John became ill and we saw the writing on the wall, he didn't want me to run for city council. He kept saying, because he served 16 years on city council. And he said, "You don't wanna do that. It is, it is an awful job." And so I probably wouldn't have done it, except when John became very, very ill, I thought, you know, I, I need to do something positive. I need to, I need to be doing something positive. And so, um, so it was kind of fun because he was in the background and he could, he could give me some little tips and, and he would look at things and he was a wonderful mentor in that way. Because he had been, um, John had been mayor and then served on the trans, the corridor.
Remember about what years he was roughly?
The, I believe the late 80s and the early 90s. It was the same years that Evelyn was on the council. He served with Evelyn and Jean Watt was on the council at the time. And, uh, so he would tell me the history of the, the corridor. Because at one point, he was telling me, um, Don Bryn called John into his office and said, "We're just not gonna be able to make the 73 happen." We're just, it's just, he said, "We've tried, we've tried, we've done everything we can do and we just don't have the support for it." And John said, "Don, we can do it. I know, you know, just give us a little more time and, and work on this with me." And so now every time I drive on the 73, I think, "Thank you, Don and John." Um, and so it was fun to have his historical perspective about when he had been on the city council. And, uh, and that, that was a great beginning for me. And then it, it worked out well after he passed away that I had this to, to really focus on. And, and so, and it, you know, people started asking me, when I was on, when I was chair of the Parks Commission back in the 80s, we had a project of restoring Inspiration Point. And so the, um, they gave it to us and said, "Come up with the design and everything, you know, and present it to the council, what you want us to do." So I suggested, in fact, I invited the Arts Commission to collaborate with us. And we came up with this plan and we did a public hearing and we passed out postcards in most of the streets in Corona Del Mar and we had a lot of people show up. And, and I always said that by the time we took that to council, there was no opposition. It was like people felt buy-in. They felt like they were part of that project. And I use that even today as my example for how you move forward with something and you really get the citizens to participate and not just force the plan upon them and say, "This is what we're gonna do." It's like, we've got such capable citizens in this.
Quite experienced to get that done on Ocean Boulevard, I'm telling you.
It was, it was pretty remarkable.
We had a sentinel that tried to be involved down there.
I know, I know. So I was just, I was proud that when we took it to council, there was nobody there to object. I thought that was the best, uh, yeah, that, that was...
Unbelievable, actually.
I know. Real, today, I don't know...
For Ocean Boulevard.
I don't know if we could do that today because people are, people are a lot more, um, there's not the cohesiveness that we used to have where people just really worked together on projects. And, I mean, there really was a sense of, "We're all in this together. This is our community." It's not, it's not, uh, doesn't belong to the politicians. It belongs to us. And, uh, that's, I think that's what I went on the city council, thinking that that was my motivation to restore that sort of feeling to council, like this community belongs to our citizens. It's not, it doesn't belong to outside influences. It belongs to us. And so, and now this COVID thing has just really gotten in the way of that. It's hard to, you know, it's, it's hard to get citizen, um, input when we can't even be in the same room. So I'm hoping that that ends soon and that we're able to get people back to, to collaborating.
How old are your grandchildren and your daughters are there all around this area?
Yep, they're all right here in town. Um, I've got a daughter who is 43 and a daughter who is 38. And the, the older daughter has three kids and they live just on the other side of the bay. Her husband went to Newport Harbor. And, uh, he was a football player at Newport Harbor and she was at CDM. And, yeah. And so then my other daughter lives right across the street and she has two.
Across the street here?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah. And so she, um, her kids went to Harborview where my girls went to elementary school. And then she's got one who's a junior, uh, in junior high at CDM and another one's still at Harborview. So on the other side of the bay, I've got one that was at Mariners and, or, yeah, and then one at Ensign and one at, at Harbor. So I'm kind of well-represented. I've got five schools that I represent in the area. And I always say, you know, it's easy for me to look at issues on the other side of the bay because both, you know, both are important to me. So I've got a broad perspective of wanting what's best for the entire community because of that.
How do you feel about, uh, the city council now after being there a few years and ready to have another council maybe or some new people or maybe not? Big elections coming up, uh, so how is this your look?
You know...
What are the big issues?
Um...
Like from the airport?
Yeah. Traffic is always, you know, traffic has always been the biggest issue. I have to say, you know what, the big discovery about being on city council has been how, um, how kind of powerless you are. You think, we all think like getting elected to city council, it's like, that's the big peak. Like you're gonna be able to do all these great things. And, and you actually don't have very much power unless you have the majority on the council with you. So I went into my position knowing that I was not part of Team Newport, but I, I made up my mind, I will work with anybody who's got the good of the city at heart. And, um, I will try to overlook differences and I will focus on the issues and just try to bring people together. I mean, I really, I actually, it sounds really weird, but I felt called to do this. I mean, I kept saying, "I don't wanna be on, I don't wanna be on city council. I don't wanna run for city council." And it's like God just kept saying, you know, "You need to do this." And so actually, what surprised me was running was fun. The campaign was so much fun. It's like you just go out and you talk to your fellow citizens about the things that matter, about your community. So that was sort of surprising, like, "Well, gee, this is easy." You just, you just go out and you talk to people and find out what they think and tell them what you think. And, and then you get to the city council and it's like you need, not only do you need four votes to get something to happen, you need three votes to even get it on the agenda. And that was the biggest shock to me. It's like, wait a minute, you mean, I'm a city council person, but I can't just put something on the agenda? I need, I need two other council members to vote with me to say, "We're gonna put this on the agenda." And that, that can be challenging sometimes because I, I will talk to the city manager sometimes, even since COVID started, and said, "We really need to talk about this." And she'd say, "You don't have the vote. And if you don't have the vote, you don't get to talk about it." So that, I, you know...
You don't have government.
Yeah. It's like, it doesn't seem right. But, so I, I, I think I've worked well with the mayor, with, um, Will O'Neill. And I always say, even though he didn't support me, um, that if he's doing the right thing for the city, I will support him. And I feel that way about everybody on the council. Like if they're doing what's best for the city of Newport Beach, I will work with them and support them. And it's when politics gets involved that things get screwed up. And so it's just like, you know, if we could just, I'm, I'm excited to get past the next election because then hopefully we can get back to just doing what's best for Newport Beach. So it's challenging.
Well, maybe you'd like to say some final words and wrapping up this with great, uh, interview. We appreciate it.
Well, the, the one thing that we didn't talk about that was one of my favorite memories was when I was in, um, junior college, we all went to the rendezvous ballroom every Friday night and danced. And it was the most fun maybe I've had in my whole life. Because back then, the dance that everybody did was the surfer stomp. And that, that ballroom was enormous. I don't remember how big it was, but it, it was huge. It would seem like a half a football field in there and it was a wooden floor. And with the surfer stomp, you're all in the same beat. So it's like there were times when this floor was just going, it was just going up and down. And we used to listen to Dick Dale and the Del Tones and the surfer music. And, uh, we had the best time. It, it was really a wonder. And then I think it was only 66 or something, 67, but it... Well, the rumors, the rumors that John told me, which are probably pretty well-founded, I probably don't wanna repeat because... I probably don't want to repeat because the stories about how it actually burned down were really sad. Well, anyway, and then, and then we also went to the Prison of Socrates, was down where B J's Pizza is. But that's when the coffee houses were big. So we would go to, uh, the Prison of Socrates to listen to music. And, um, then we'd go to the Golden Bear in Huntington Beach and we'd hear the folk singers, you know, and Jose Feliciano had a place up right at the corner of Dover and, um, Seventeenth Street. And we, we had a lot of fun. And now the closest we have to that now is the American Legion. And there's, I love going to the Legion, I love-
Going to night, you know, dancing.
Yeah, and on, on Tuesdays, they do their hootenanny where they have, they have all these musicians that sit in a circle and just play music. And one of the guys that was with, I think it was the Safaris, which was a band that we used to hear at the Rendezvous and who composed one of the famous surf tunes plays in this group at the American Legion. So it's, uh, it was really fun. It was a more, it was a more innocent time, as I said. But anyway, but you know what? It's still like the greatest place to live in the world. And the best thing about traveling is that you find out that there's no place else that you want to live. And so even with COVID, I think the thing that we've learned is that we still have an amazing place to call home. And we've had challenges during this time. But I just feel like as long as we focus on the gratitude and focus on just solving our problems, then we're still a pretty fortunate group of citizens to live here.
Thank you very much, Joy. It's a pleasure, interesting to hear all this.
Nice, nice to talk with you. Yeah, yeah, so funny to, to think about all the old times.
Right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome.